It is 6:30 and I believe we have all school committee members except for Michael on right now. So let's, I will call the meeting to order. Could I have an, could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Dave Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Somebody's on mute, Jennifer.
Jennifer, you're on mute.
Unmuted.
Back on mute.
Hey, hold on.
There you go. Nope, back on mute for Jennifer.
So mute is coming up as, okay, so Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Luca Stowe, yes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to September. This meeting, we're gonna really be focusing on the back to school plans. It's certainly a different back to school than anything that we have experienced before. But before we get into that, I would like to take a moment to talk about the subcommittees. You all should have gotten a list of subcommittee, subcommittee membership that I gave to Julia to send out kind of later this afternoon. If you have any questions about subcommittee membership or the meetings that you're on, please let me know. I would like to ask each subcommittee to meet between now and the next, to try and meet. And I realize it's a short period of time, only two weeks between now and the next meeting. But I'd like you to try and meet to touch base and at a minimum, talk about goals for the coming year. You know, what we have done, did last year, and I'd like to do again this year, is really have the subcommittees come forward with proposed school committee goals, which we will discuss at our meeting two weeks from now. Is there anything that anyone has for the good of the organization that you'd like to talk about? I just want to thank the administration and faculty for everything that you've been doing to get prepared for back to school.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we move on to superintendent's report?
Sure. So the reopening, I've got quite a few things to kind of bring you all up to date on. Some of you have been participating in some of those events and things, but we've sent out a lot of communications recently. I think I've sent most of you copies of those to parents around how things are going, the schedule, communications, also around fall sports. Minuteman kind of joined ranks with some of the other regional vocational technical schools and agreed to postpone all the fall sports until this thing that's called a floating season. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but, and we're still awaiting final guidelines, big surprise. The only thing we may be able to do this fall is golf, but we're, our athletic directors are talking to each other, especially the schools that we play. But football's a definite no. Soccer, there are some schools doing soccer. We didn't know how we could possibly do it, so we're not doing it. The floating season is some, the way I understand it and the way it's been described is it's gonna be three or four weeks in the winter, which we'll evaluate that as we get closer to that. My sense is that there aren't gonna be too many schools trying to play soccer on frozen fields or football in snow, although it's fun to play in snow. And we had a parent town hall meeting, or before I get to that. So tomorrow and Thursday, we have our ninth graders coming in, half of them at a time, for an orientation. They'll receive their laptops and get some training on it, get a little bit more orientation to things here. So we're looking forward to having some real kids in the building over the next few days. We had a parent town hall meeting last Wednesday. It was very well attended. I wasn't tracking it 100% of the time, but there was between 350 and 380 parents on, on the meeting. We set it up like as a webinar, so they were able to put questions in this Q and A box. And there were over 260 questions, which we got to about 95% of them. We went a little bit longer. But it was very well received and we got a lot of nice emails and texts and comments from the parents, a lot of, I don't know if there's misunderstanding, you know, it's hard for parents to kind of grasp what's going on, especially when in their own home community, it may be very different than what we're trying to do here. And we're using the feedback from the questions, it's actually 15 pages of questions and answers that we did during an hour and 20 minutes. And we're gonna use that to inform our updating of what we have as frequently asked questions on our website. So that was very, I think it was well worth the, the effort and the time. And we got to use Zoom in a little bit different fashion. Our safety video, I'm gonna share my screen. I don't know if some of you have seen this. I shared it with the officers. It's a three-minute video that we had produced by Andrew Mudge. And as a matter of fact, the Department of Education has picked it up and posted it on their website and their Facebook page. Hopefully you can hear this.
At Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School, our mission is to provide comprehensive career technical education and robust academics, while also ensuring the health and safety of our students, staff, and visitors. When you return to Minuteman High School this fall, you're gonna notice a few big changes designed to keep you safe. Minuteman is using a hybrid model. That means 25% of the students are in the building and 75% are at home. Each week, one grade will come to school to take classes in their vocational shops. All academics and electives will be taught remotely. By hosting vocational learning in person, Minuteman is adhering to its mission of providing high-quality career technical education for our students. For academics, Minuteman has invested in additional tools and training to provide a robust and structured learning experience this fall. If you're taking the school bus, only one student will sit on a seat and everyone will wear a mask. Windows will be open for ventilation as often as possible and students will have access to hand sanitizer. The buses will be cleaned and disinfected between each run. When you're entering the building, wearing a mask is required as well. Just like the aisles in your supermarket, we're controlling traffic flow in the hallways to maintain social distancing. We'll have hand sanitizer stations located at various points around the school. We'll also increase the sanitation of frequently touched surfaces such as doorknobs and handles, stair rails, countertops, light switches, bathrooms, and so forth. We're also installing Plexiglas in numerous offices and classrooms. All desks will be spaced six feet apart and facing the same direction. Teachers will be required to wear masks and all classroom learning will encourage as much social distancing as reasonably possible. In addition to the increased cleaning, a separate health office will be available for anyone exhibiting symptoms. We are closely following all state and federal guidelines which are posted on minuteman.org. Believe me, despite this challenge, we're still going to make sure our students have a robust and fulfilling school experience this year. We have a lot more information on our website, including details on how we're cleaning our buses and buildings and other protocols. This is a new process for everyone and we're making sure we're meeting or exceeding all guidelines. This may not be the school year we imagine, but we've all got to do our part to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Know that behind this mask, we're smiling at you. We're welcoming you and we can't wait to see you in September. Good morning, Minuteman!
Very nice. It was very well done.
Yes, we've gotten a lot of good feedback on that as well. And we did a shorter one that went on all our other social media, on Instagram and Facebook and all that other stuff. So stop me if you have any questions on anything I'm talking about. I feel like I'm just doing an update dump here. But the other thing that we, we talked about previously, Jennifer, yeah, you're on mute.
Just a quick question. I, I know there's a separate nurses station for people that are exhibiting symptoms. What are you doing with those students? Are they being sent home? Are they getting picked up? Or they, what's the plan? I mean, I know universities are now want to keep, they're being told to keep their students. You obviously can't, but what's the plan?
They go home. They get a call and their parents come and get them.
Come and get them, okay.
Yep. So the, when we surveyed the staff, one of the main concerns that came clearly out of that survey was, in addition to safety and health, the major concern was childcare. So what we've done for these past 10 days, or the first 10 days of school, we've, we prepared rooms over at what was the Tremont School, which was originally built as a daycare center. And we have some paraprofessionals over there taking care of the, of the kids of our staff. And we're not charging them for that. It'll end for the most part, a week from Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, when the seniors come in for the first day. But in addition to that concern was the ongoing concern of what do our staff who have children in other districts do if those districts are remote for, or a hybrid? And there's some period of time where our staff has children at home with no one there. So in the same space over there, and we did a few surveys with staff to find out how many kids there might be in grades one through eight whose home districts were remote. And we've set up what we're calling a facilitated learning program for those kids who will be over there supervised. We're gonna hire some folks. We're not delivering curriculum. We're just kind of facilitating those kids sitting there with their devices, doing the work that their home school district has required them to do while they're in a remote model. And it, the, because there's so many different towns and so many different remote models and such, it's gonna be a rolling kind of daily attendance. And we're going to charge for that, as I mentioned. And as long as those kids are in a remote model, the staff can bring them here. And so that has resulted in virtually 100% of our staff being able to teach remotely from Minuteman High School, which our infrastructure is more reliable. The building may be safer than some people's other options to teach. But it's really been, it's kind of eased some of the concerns of a lot of the staff. And we're fortunate to have that facility to do it. And so far, it's, I guess it's been working well with the, what I call just the extended daycare time. And we'll see how the facilitated learning goes, but.
Ford, Ford has a question?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just want to say, I had the opportunity to go through the school, through the school with Ed and Rich. And it's a great facility. I didn't realize, I've been through part of it where Gilbane was, but it's a great facility. They're using, I think it's four rooms, three to four rooms that were previously used for school students way back when. And it's, this is a great service and I'm very proud of Minuteman that's offering it to his staff. I mean, it's probably unheard of in most districts and I just want to congratulate the administration.
Well, thanks.
So one quick question. So that teachers that have medical issues, are those all been resolved or they're just coming in and being very isolated?
That's my next item.
Oh, sorry. You said 100%, I don't.
Judy.
Um, thank you. Again, I second my colleagues. It's great thinking out of the box. And particularly being a regional school, it has different issues altogether. So you were about to say, Ed, how many children you think might participate if need be in the grade one through eight program?
I think the maximum we might have for a couple of days would be around 20.
Thank you, thank you.
And the other concern was safety and health issues. And I think there were a dozen or so teachers who I met with, most of them, and talked with them about what their concerns were, what their, what they would need as an accommodation here at Minuteman in order for them to feel comfortable teaching from school. And we've been able to meet all those accommodations. And those things range from Plexiglas, more Plexiglas, to different PPE or more robust PPE or moving their classroom to a, a place that's closer to an exit door so they can exit and enter and not have to go through a larger population of staff. So I think that was it, moving, moving, and everyone has their own space. We've kind of, Amy and Diane and George and Sarah, our school nurse, have kind of found a bunch of little places and spaces that will be used by teachers. So no one is sharing, for the most part, the shops are sharing, obviously, but the academic teachers all have their own spaces. And to this, there's a, it appears we have 100% of our staff gonna be able to teach here, which is unheard of, so.
Well, that's, that's kudos to you, because that is, that is huge to make them feel comfortable being there. I mean, that's, I've talked to some teachers who've had, not in, not at Minuteman, but at other places that have not had as a robust a response from their administration, so good for you.
Questions, Jeff?
Just a comment. I would feel comfortable teaching at Minuteman despite being 65. I don't feel comfortable teaching at Newton South, where I'm employed. But the way that you've arranged it at Minuteman, I would feel, I would feel comfortable coming in.
Yeah, and you know, we'll see how it goes. We want to make, it's not a, it's something we have to continue to revisit and check in with folks to see how they're doing. So professional development, we have some things lined up with the Middlesex Youth Partnership to come in and train us all on how to deal with, with students and in some cases, staff that have had trauma over the last six months, whether it's a loss of a family member or a job or both. We really need to get more, I guess, competent at that, because it's gonna be pretty widespread. The building, let's see, oh, MTI opened tonight with an orientation. We're splitting the orientation over three nights. I think we had about 18 to 20 adult students here this evening. All new students. We have some returning students as well. And by the end of this week, they'll all have received the orientation and those programs will be starting. We've kept the class sizes limited to 10, which we feel is responsible. And so that seems to be going pretty well. One of those MTI programs will have a session on Saturday as well. I believe it's electrical. That'll be working in the shop on Saturday. We're also working with MAVA, the Mass Association of Vocational Administrators, to allow them to offer two classes here in person. And we reviewed with them where they're gonna be and what the protocols are that they have to follow. They, all their classes were canceled in the spring, and so there's quite a few, and some of them are our teachers who will be participating in these classes through MAVA and Pittsburgh State. And those will be just on Saturday as well. And we are charging them a little cleanup fee at the end of each week. That, that's all I have for the remote, for the reopening of school. I don't know if there are any general questions before we talk a little bit about the, well, the school building project is later on, I guess. We can talk about that later.
Um, let's see, we have Judy, then Alice.
Thank you, Pam. One question, please. Desi came out with another guidance document suggesting that all students, public school students, need to have a flu shot at a certain date. So I just wanted to ask, I think the number was 81% of Massachusetts students were inoculated regardless prior to this year. Would it be any movement in having the kids, the students inoculated at school?
Yes, we've set that up already with CVS. And one of the, my son-in-law is a, he's kind of a bigwig at CVS. And he didn't do anything for me, but um, one of our, one of our students' mothers is a pharmacist at, I believe it's a CVS in Watertown. And in the process, you know, in the communication, she just said, you know, I'd like to get a flu clinic for you at school, for staff and for students. And so that's in the works.
You're, you're ahead of the game, so thank you.
Okay, Alice?
I was just curious about early college high school and wondering if any kids are doing that? Seeing that they have to be online anyway, are they able to do those things still? Or is that kind of fallen by the wayside because of all the pandemic?
No, not at all. You know, we have dual enrollment classes here. I think we have seven of them. George may have more detail on that than I do right now. But as, as far as I know, we're running those as we always have, including.
Yeah, we're in those, yep.
Am I correct, George?
You are.
Golden opportunity, actually.
Yeah, we hope more kids take advantage of it.
Yeah.
It's getting, it's becoming more, well, A, it's becoming more well-known. And there are more students across the Commonwealth now who are graduating with their associate's degree when they get their high school diploma. I mean, you may recall, we had one last year. And I know some of the other regional vocational schools have had, you know, half a dozen to a dozen, and that's growing, so. Any other questions I can answer? It's been, you know, we've had staff in the building. Everyone's getting used to it. And we're off, you know, we're off and running. Tomorrow will be fun to see kids again.
Yeah. Well, and again, I just want to comment on, I know the tremendous collaboration that's taken place to get you to the place you are. And, you know, just want to acknowledge and thank everyone who's been part of that. I did see another hand, I think it was Judy, yes.
Sorry, one more question. I just thought of it. Mask breaks. Is there a designated spot at school or is it class by class?
George, you want to expand on how mask breaks are gonna work?
Yeah, we've, for, for starters, we're very fortunate that most of our shops have access right to the outside, whether it's through a door or garage. So, you know, we've talked about that, just like we would do typically, we let the teachers have the discretion. They know, they know when there's a good, you know, logical pause in the action to say, okay, why don't we take a, why don't we take a minute, you know, take our masks off, and we open the, the door and we'll get some more fresh air in here. We've also talked about putting it on a, embedding it right into the bell system in the school as a sort of reminder for people. You know, we got, I threw it out to the faculty and what we're trying to figure out now is, well, what's a good reminder? Every 45 minutes, every hour, like what, you know, what makes sense? But when we kind of come down to a decision, we can have a few bells that would also prompt people to say, you know, hey, if you hadn't had a break in a while, now would be a good time to have one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So sort of in the spirit of the cooperation that's been happening between the district, the administration and the teachers, we have a couple of MOUs. One is around the animal science program, which you may recall, when we had the multimedia program starting, we only hired Drew as a halftime teacher. And so we needed an MOU to do that. And the animal science program will start as a halftime as well. Although I have to share with you, we've, we've offered the job to three people, two of whom initially wanted, accepted the job and then because of concerns around COVID withdrew or whatever. And then the third one, who I really thought we had someone, she initially said no and I called her and said, you know, I used to be an animal science teacher. This is gonna be great, blah, blah, blah. So it took her five more days to say no. But um, so we posted the job again and we're really getting down to the wire. I, I think my animal science license is still valid, but nobody wants me to teach, so. Jeff wants me to teach. No, okay. So anyway, the first MOU, which I believe you got in your packet, is for the animal science halftime program. And then the second one is just a very broad-based generic MOU around the reopening. The, the union officers and the administration felt like it'd be a, just a smart thing to put our basic concepts in, in, in an agreement that will be subject to review time to time, just so that, you know, it's just the right thing to do, I guess.
Okay. Well, why don't we take these one at a time? Could I first have a motion on the memorandum of agreement for the animal science?
I will vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between Minuteman Regional Vocational School District Committee and the Minuteman Faculty Association regarding the animal science program.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's move on to roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Luca Stowe, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Passed unanimously. Let's move on to the general memorandum of agreement. Can I have a motion, please?
I will vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee and the Minuteman Faculty Associates, Association Regarding the Hybrid Model.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Moving to discussion, I see Jeff, then Michael.
I have a comment. And I've gotten to see this reopening process, front row seats in two schools, in Newton and here. And Newton's process is not going as smoothly as the process here, partly because of the type of organization it is and partly for other reasons. So my comment is this, and I hope that Dr. Boquillen will do me a favor and pass this on. I want to state, and I think the right word is admiration, for the administration, for the faculty, the staff, the union, on the process that they have followed in coming to these agreements and the opening of the school. Now, we can't guarantee the outcome, right? But we can talk about the process and the process is something, as I said, of all these people working together and of these agreements and the opening plan, the process is something that I admire, having been able to see a similar process somewhere else. So I am doing a comparison here. So I'd appreciate it if you would, if you would pass that along to all the, the players here at Minuteman.
Me certainly will, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jeff. Michael.
What Jeff said. We've all watched, we've all watched the process of, of, of hammering out a reopening plan in our hometowns and in other places in the Commonwealth. And Minuteman stands out for the amount of quiet rather than the amount of noise that it has generated in, in the public, in the press. Uh, and that is an achievement, and my congratulations to all sides of the table. And I, and I hope the faculty and the union folks know that we, we, we stand somewhat in awe of how well it's, at least up until this point, congratulations.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, I mean, please do pass on our thanks, admiration. Congratulations to, on behalf of the entire school committee.
Thank you, I will. Some of them are listening too, so.
Well, thank you for those who are on the call. Um, any other comments or questions before we move to a vote? Okay, let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Lucusso, yes.
Okay, um, thank you. And, you know, thank you for putting these in place and bringing them before us tonight. So we move on to the school building project update.
This is Ford Spalding, and for the school building project, there are just a few minor issues that we're dealing with, and when I say a few, you can count them on, you can't even use one hand to count them. The only one that you'll probably see visibly if you come to the campuses, we're going to be doing some work in the parking lot on the drainage issue. We've had some flooding when we've had rain, which hasn't been very often. Uh, so that is going to be fixed. I think that was the problem with the people that put it in. So that'll be done by Monday, they'll start work on Thursday. We're hoping that we're going to get all our closeout numbers from Gilbane mainly on September twenty-five. They heard from Ed and myself loud and clear this morning that we need to have those numbers. We've scheduled a school building committee meeting for Tuesday, October sixth at 5:00 PM, which is in advance of the school committee meeting of the same date, where they will hear a report from the, uh, those of us that are working on the athletic complex, phase one, and hopefully we're going to be able to have quotes in that will verify those numbers. Uh, and then your meeting is, it's, our meeting is at six-thirty, where we hopefully will get a yes vote to move forward, assuming we can move forward. Uh, the field, three fields should be completed the end of September of twenty-one. From the athletic field presentation, which is going to probably move forward to be the only presentation you're going to have in the future, on August nineteenth, the project was advertised at come-bys for solicitation of bids by a general contractor. As of today, we have approximately thirty firms that are interested in our project. Uh, there's a difference between interested at this stage and actually putting in the bids, but that's where we are right now. And next Monday, the fourteenth, there's going to be a pre-bid walkthrough. And then final bids are due on Sept-, uh, the thirtieth of September. If any of you are contacted by anyone that's interested in this project between now and the time we meet, ignore them and contact me directly if that's the case, please. But please don't participate with them in any way. Castle Booze is currently working on pricing with an independent consultant, so we're going to have their ideas of what, how we think we'll be looking at. Hopefully that'll be done by next week. And that's where we are, we're moving forward and, uh, right now, thank you.
Thank you, Ford. Questions or comments?
I know that you just said that it's different, you know, interest is different than submitting a bid, but am I right that thirty is not a bad number at this point?
No, it's, it's an excellent. In, in, in a project that I'm working on elsewhere, we, we didn't have that number, but about half of them, if we're lucky, will come through with solid bids, and that'll be good.
Yeah, the architects noted that was pretty robust amount of interest. Which is goes, bodes well for-
Great. Yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. I also just want to note that Jennifer had another meeting that she had to leave for, and will be back later on if we are still meeting. Okay, let's move on to finance report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. I provided the school committee with a spreadsheet identifying the fund activity and balances of our student activity accounts, beginning in fiscal year twenty and ending in fiscal year twenty. While some sub-accounts ended the fiscal year with lower balances than the beginning of fiscal year twenty, only two of them actually ended with negative balances, and we know that last year was an unusual year. Skills USA competition ended with a negative balance of eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents. Community service ended with a negative balance of eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. And for a little bit of an explanation on that, you probably remember just when the closure started and the prob, the concerns happened with the pandemic, uh, it was right around the timing of our trip, our service learning trip to Puerto Rico, and that had to be canceled. And while we were able to get the airfare back, we were not able to get the lodging back, so that's why that ended in a negative balance. However, it's not uncommon for our clubs and our sub-activities to do additional fundraising in years where they end with a little bit of a lower balance. And I'm confident that these balances are acceptable to start fiscal year twenty-one. Tonight, I asked the school committee to vote to approve the student activity accounts as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Michael.
Uh, just because of the extraordinary circumstances of this year, are all of the, uh, clubs and entities represented in that spreadsheet aware of their balances? Has that information been communicated to them? It's, it's not something that they can just hop on down the hallway and pick up a copy from the school office? Well, actually, our, our staff are great at checking on those sort of details. Uh, they check in with our accounting assistant, Sonya Betrono, who's wonderful, and she provides them that data whenever they need it, so it's literally a phone call away for our staff. I, I guess I'm asking, has that information been pushed rather than being available on request? The, uh, yes, they all understand where their balances are as of this point. Okay.
Anyone, any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucusso, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, item B is the approval of the monthly informational list of donations as presented. Because this meeting's happening early in the month, we did have one, uh, donation to a scholarship. And so I provide that data to the school committee, and I would ask you to vote to approve that September list of donations.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Okay, let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Oh, yes.
And then agenda, uh, I, item C, I put on the agenda just as a, a school committee notification that the Minuteman School Committee will be appointing a member to the Minuteman Retirement Board at the next meeting. Dr. Bill Boquillen will be sending out a recommendation to the school committee. So it's just a notification for a, a future agenda item. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Bob? Okay, let's move on to the policy subcommittee. Alice.
Hi. Um, so you guys probably all got the mask policy from MASC sometime. Do you get an email? Does everybody get an email? Or something from the MASC?
That's a great question, Alice, because we called MASC today.
Yeah.
Julia, I don't know if Julia spoke with someone to make sure they have the current list of our school committee members.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a pretty decent service. They'll mail you a paper that says these are all the new policies we recommend, stuff like that. They sent out one on masks. And the administration went over it, and I read over it with Amy. We asked some questions, they sent it to the school district's attorneys as well. And then we added a sentence describing what is a mask. And it's now before you for your consideration for first reading. Can we get, could we get a motion to approve it for first reading, then discuss it?
No move.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Second.
Um, so I didn't receive any comments. Julia, did you get any comments? No.
No, she did not get any comments.
Okay, um, has anybody got anything they want to comment on this policy?
Okay, I saw Jeff and Michael, so let's start with Jeff.
My only comment is, whenever I have to read a policy because of the possible complex language, technical language in it, I always get a little, oh, no, I gotta try to read that, but it's really a pleasure to read a policy which is simple language and straightforward and very clear. So I guess all the different people, you know, the, them and you, or whatever, whoever put the language together, it's wonderful when you can read something that's straight English and totally makes sense, so that's my only comment, I'm very happy to see it.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Michael.
Yep, declarative sentences, avoiding the use of the passive, like it very much. I'm sure this is a rookie question. What does the acronym EBCFA stand for?
Uh, that is a code that's developed by the National School Boards Association, NSBA, that MASC adopted, and somehow or another, MASC came up with that particular coding for this particular policy. You can go online and look up the NSBA two thousand and twelve rubric, if you wish, that describes all of the codes. This is whatever MASC cooked up for this one.
I, 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 I think Jeff and I have a lot of experience in reading government documents and in interpreting that answer to me, none of us knows either. Thank you, that's all from me. One, one more thing, one more thing if I may, please, Pam. Had specific questions from, from folks in my community about, about the enforcement. And I see there's, there's a paragraph there that, that, that sort of is on point to that, that students that refuse to comply with this policy will be referred to the assistant principal for, for whatever appropriate measures that person decides to take. Do I read that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my understanding of it. Ed, you want to speak to it?
You know, we had summer school here, uh, I didn't, I put, I put in the packet a summary of summer school, and we had no problems whatsoever with kids wearing masks. We've had no requests either for medical reasons or political reasons not to wear a mask. And, you know, even this evening with our adult MPI students, it's just simple reminders. And so we're expecting a pretty good compliance. Um, and if someone is having trouble wearing a mask, we'll find out why, and and then they'll wear the mask.
Okay, thank you for that.
I have one more comment to make on this. There was a lot of nonsense in the original. And the school district excised the nonsense, and then there was some more discussion, and then just to make sure that we hadn't accidentally excised some critical thing, that's when the school attorney was contacted. So I feel pretty good that they've covered everything.
Simple language, clear language makes me happy.
I thought I saw another, someone else raised their hand. Are there any other comments? Okay, then we can move on to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucusso, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, back to you, Alice, for secretary's report.
These minutes for these two meetings that we're going to talk about next are, are longer than normal because the topics were more meaty than usual. That's, that is all I have to say. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of August sixth and August eleventh as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Dave?
I was absent for one of them, so I can't, like, I guess I can, can vote on it, but I don't know if I, uh,
Which one?
The first one. Let's see, look at that.
Oh, yeah, so just abstain.
Well, if we're voting for them together, why don't we take them one at a time?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so can we start with, um, the August?
August sixth?
Yes.
And Dave, you weren't there according to the minutes.
That's correct.
Okay, so just, um, a motion to approve the August sixth minutes?
No move.
Second.
Okay, now any other discussion? Let's move to the roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor abstain.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucusso, yes.
Okay, now a motion to approve the August eleventh.
Second.
Any comment? Okay, roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucusso, yes.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, just a reminder, our next school committee is September twenty-second. We have this, we had decided earlier to, um, to, to meet more often rather than less, so we have two meetings scheduled for October, first September, and then I believe the next meeting after that. Um, I'm pulling up my calendar, is October sixth, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
From all the school committee members, our best thoughts and wishes for the school in starting the school year. We'll be thinking of you, and let us know if you anything, need anything from us that is in our purview.
Thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely, and we look forward to hearing about it at our next meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, so we, hearing no comments, I'm going to move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yeah?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucusso, yes.
Thank you, everyone, um,
Thank you.
And again, we'll be thinking of the administration and the faculty, the students, as school reopens.
Be good, Ed.
Here.